Okay, welcome everyone. I know people are still being checked in. Thank you all for coming, really appreciate it. And I am so grateful the sun is out because we were worried about an hour, two hours ago, going, "Uh-oh." And we're also glad that the parking lot allowed you all to get into it today, so that worked out well. So, thank you so much for participating in really one of the most important things that citizens do, which is vote. That's important for -- can you can't hear, because fans are going, I'll talk louder. Thank you. So, we'll get started, and our first thing is a pledge of allegiance. So, if we could stand and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, tonight, this is our second attempt at a school budget. And for, as we stated in the mailing, the board has been working really hard on putting a budget together that meets the students' educational needs, as well as being fiscally responsible. And so, after the failed referendum, they took a lot of discussion and talking about how do we reduce the budget, what are the priorities? And so, tonight, we're going to go through each article like we did last time and explain what's in that article, and then you'll have the opportunity to vote on those articles. So, the first thing that we are going to do is introduce the board members, the directors. Brandon, I'm looking at you, so yes, you're kicking us off.
Brandon Richards, Sabates.
Kristy Willett, Litchfield.
Yeah, it's hard to hear, you're going to have to lean right into the mic. Diane Whalen, Sabates. Douglas, you want to -- yeah.
Doug Pompous, Litchfield.
Jill Bouchard, Litchfield.
Scott Fife, Wales.
Laura Clifford, Sabates.
Robert Gaten, Sabates.
Robert English, Wales.
And I'm Katie Grand in the superintendent of schools. The first thing we need to do is to elect a moderator, so can I have nominations?
I nominate Mark Russell.
Okay. Jill nominates Mark Russell. Do I have a second? Robbie, seconds. So, we have one nomination. Is there another nomination, anyone else? Okay, so, we need three members of the public to vote, or at least three, for the moderator. And right now, well, not right now, the person is Mark Russell that has been nominated for that role. Do I see three people moving toward -- I -- yep, go ahead. Well, we have to do it as a written ballot, and Sharon is waiting at the ballot box. Let me see, one, two, three, and four, five. Okay, good. Sharon, you're going to count. Yes, so, Mark, welcome to being the moderator. Come on up, and you'll be sworn in. Do swear that I will faithfully discharge --
Do swear that I faithfully discharge.
-- to the best of my ability --
Best of my ability.
-- to duties incumbent on me --
Duties incumbent on me.
-- as moderator of this annual budget meeting --
As moderator of this annual budget meeting.
-- according to the Constitution --
According to the Constitution.
-- and laws of the state --
Laws of the state.
-- and that I will support the Constitution --
That I will support the Constitution.
-- of the United States and that of this state --
And that of this state.
-- so long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
So help me God.
First thing I got to do is figure out what to do with my hat. Jim, is everybody -- right there, good? I need to swear in the ballot clerks. I state your name. Do swear that I will faithfully discharge, to the best of my ability, the duties incumbent on me as clerk of the annual budget meeting, according to the Constitution and laws of the state, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, so long as I shall continue a citizen thereof. Anything else before we get started? I want to thank you all for coming. We'll start right in. We will be using Robert's Rules of Order, with the backup of the main moderator, if there's any questions with that. I will ask for permission for the non-resident administrators to speak. If I will entertain a motion to allow the following people to speak: Katie Grandin, Kathy Martin, Samantha Garnett-Ciasse, John Varney, Marco Alberti, Dustin Miles, Amy St. Pierre, Norma Jean Audit, Jim Palmer, Nancy Dwyer, and Brian Daniels.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify. All those opposed, it passes. Article One, regular instruction.
So, regular instruction, as has, is very important. Obviously, it's almost the foundation of the school department, which is what is going on in the classroom. So, it's just a reminder, what's in Article One is our classroom teachers, which are approximately 85, and a few ed tech positions that cover our gifted and talented, our pre-K classrooms. And then, we also have supplies and equipment for learning and teaching, and there were no new positions. We have since reduced, since the superintendent proposed budget, we've reduced three elementary teacher positions and one ed tech position. Part of that comes from looking at class sizes, looking at, you know, what are the class sizes across, where can we reduce? So, we took that very seriously as we looked at each class sizes for each building. The other thing is important to know is, you know, we continue to come out of COVID and meeting our students' needs and their developmental needs, but their academic needs. As stated in the mailing, we have approximately 1,300 students, and in order to educate them with our 85 teachers and four ed techs, you know, we're reaching a goal of 80% of our students meeting state assessments. And currently, we're at 76.9% in ELA and 71.3% in math. And this is hard work in the classroom, as teachers are addressing students' social, emotional needs, the academic needs, those gaps. There are students that are in schools that had disruption over three years, that we're still trying to fill in their gaps and work with them. And then, we have students that have maintained and still need enrichment and advancement. So, all of that with our AP courses, things that we're offering at the high school, our middle school, being able to do some different things there. So, and at our elementary school, with our class sizes and trying to meet their educational needs. For every student counts, and every student, we push hard for growth. And that's heavy work we're doing and will continue to do this year. Since the unsuccessful referendum, we have reduced that by $61,654.92. And that comes from looking at our workers' comp came in. And so, in every article with that workman's comp adjustment, we were able to do reduction. We also have an ELL ed tech position in there that was not funded this year. We did not fill that position. And so, looking at the needs of our English language learner students, we do have, still have support for those students with another ed tech position. And so, we looked at all of that, and this is where that reduction is. So, you can see that overall, regular instruction is up 1.23%, or $91,000. And a lot of that is salary and benefits of our staff.
Is there a motion, please?
Yes, sir. What -- up $7,540,653.61? Motion's been made and seconded. I ask if you want to speak, please come up to the mic. Would rather not carry the mic around if we don't have to. If for some reason you can't come to the mic, let me know, and we will bring the mic to you. Is there any comments or discussion, questions?
Jen Waterman, Sabates. Just a question. I know that it was discussed of potentially not filling the freshman science position. Is that back in this budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, please signify. Those opposed, it passes. Article Two.
So, this Article Two is special education. This represents our commitment and also the law around students who have disabilities. And we provide a free and appropriate public education for approximately 250 students. So, this article pays for salary and benefits of our special education, which is approximately 15 teachers and 40 educational technicians. We have a director of special education. We have an admin assistant and two speech teachers. We also pay for students who, in an IUP meeting, it's decided that our programming cannot meet their needs, and they put them to an out-ofplacement, such as a spur wink, a Margaret Murphy. So, those decisions are made in a team setting, and we have budgeted for 19 of those in previous. This is one of the largest increases to the budget. As you can see, it's up $646,000 in this. And that is because we were budgeting for average attendance of those 19 slots. So, when our students go to those private purpose schools, we were averaging, and we only had to pay for them attending. That has changed, that there's been emergency legislation put forth that we will need to pay 100% of the attendance, rather, even if the student does not attend. And this is because those schools are saying, "It's hard for us to budget, hard for us to staff, when we don't know what the revenue is coming in because of the attendance." So, they pushed hard for this, and so, we have to budget at 100%. So, putting us at 100% is raising the budget, and that, but we're obligated to do so. And then, there's also our purchase services for OT and PT in this. There are no new positions. There was also a reduction of three educational technician positions. So, again, looking at the needs of the students, those positions, we had five ed tech positions that we were unable to fill this year. So, in looking at what are we really hoping we can fill, we have three positions that we're looking at, two positions that we're looking at filling. So, we're always looking at checking and adjusting as students move in, move out, and so forth. So, you can see that increase there. We have reduced this article by $40,000. That was an additional ed tech position that we reduced. And so, that's most of that cost plus workman's comp. So, this is the article with the largest increase. But it's important that we provide a high-quality education to our special ed students.
Looking for a motion for Article Two. Motion's been made and seconded to authorize the board to -- how was that word?
Yeah. It is -- yes, I do.
The motion is for the, that the RSU will be authorized to expend for special education It has been seconded. Any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify. And all those opposed, it passes. Article Three.
So, Article Three, we don't receive funds for this article, so I just want, that's just to make you aware of why you don't need to vote on Article Three. It's because we don't, we don't have money committed to the career and technical. Our funds go through the Lewiston Regional Technical School, and our students, we send there.
We don't need a vote on that?
I don't believe you need to vote. Did you vote last night?
I don't know, to be honest.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Tom Pelletier from Litchfield, I have a point of order. It's an article on your warrant, needs to be voted on.
Okay.
The what?
It's an article on your warrant.
Okay, you're talking about Article Three, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, we're just, we're --
It's on your warrant, so it has to be voted on, even though there's no money.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Is there a motion on Article Three?
So, moved and seconded to expend $0 for career and technical education. Is there any comments or questions?
All those in favor, please signify. And all those opposed, it passes. Article Four.
So, Article Four is other instruction. So, this is the co-curricular, this is supporting students beyond the classroom, which are very important in their development as their whole child. It's not just about the academics, but it's also about exploring different things like robotics, or being part of civil rights, or drama, chorus. It's also our sports programming, which we offer soccer and baseball, softball, football. We have co-ops with other, lacrosse, I'm going to miss one probably. But, and we also, when we can't field a team, we look at other districts to be part of co-ops, and other districts also look to us if their students can participate. So, this is all the importance about athletics and co-curricular for our students. It also includes graduation costs. So, all of this is really stipends, and we have an athletic director position that oversees those. We did reduce this by $894.67, and that was really around workers' comp adjustment.
Is there a motion on Article Four?
Bob.
I move that we, Article Four, that we uprise the spend for other instruction $519,761.66.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then moved and seconded to authorize to expend for other instruction $519,761.66. Comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify. And all those opposed, it passes. Article Five.
This is student-staff support. These positions really support students around technology, also our nursing and medical staff. We have technicians, librarians, social workers, our guidance counselors, so very important with the social, emotional part of the student, and so that they get the supports they need in order to be attentive and engaged in learning. You can see here that we have five guidance counselors, three social workers, four librarians. The nurse's position, this was one of those, the article in which we explained that there was technology. We have ARP funds, which are those federal funds that we received around COVID, and we had had technology paid for in that grant. We tried to move that into the general fund this year, and we pushed it back into that grant and removed the nurse position there. And we were talking about sharing the nurse position, as we have done in the past, which is having schools share a nurse. So, in further consideration, we brought forward to add a licensed practical nurse, so that each building would have medical support. That team will decide how to best utilize each position to meet the needs of the students, the medical needs. This is a way to address the medical needs in more cost-effective way than having registered nurses in every building. So, we had a larger reduction here, and then the board decided to put in the LPN, so that all of our schools had that coverage.
Looking for a motion for Article Five? Yes, sir.
It's hard, because we're having trouble with the fan, just like you're having trouble with hearing us.
You're looking for a motion on --
Looking for a motion for Article Five?
Okay, I recommend that we reduce the budget amount to $2,415,831. That's a 5% reduction.
Could you bring the number here to me, so I make sure I'm not mishearing you? I'll let you tell them that later. There's been a motion to authorize the expenditure for student and staff support of $2,415,831. Is there a second? Is there a second?
A second.
There is a second. Yes, sir. Please state your name and where you're from, please.
Rocky from Sabates. I just have a question on where the reduction's going to come from, to drop it down.
Okay. Sir, would you like to come to the microphone and tell us the reasoning and the reduction?
The reason that I suggest a reduction is --
Please speak a little bit closer.
The reason for the reduction, I feel, is the guidance counselors, I think we can reduce that by one at least. Five guidance counselors is a little much for our size school.
Did anybody have any questions about what he said?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, because --
Name and time.
My name's Elizabeth, and I'm from Litchfield. And I want to confirm that there will be a nurse in every school. My son has a life-threatening illness called type 1 diabetes. This is his blood sugar right now. I want to see that number. I don't want to see any crisis, counselors, day-to-day emotional regulation should not be cut, when in this addendum, we've seen COVID mentioned. I don't want to see a reduction in anything. Thank you.
Okay, the question was, will there be a nurse in every school?
Yes.
Answers, yes.
There'll be a nurse and a licensed practitioner nurse, and they'll be working as a team on where are the high needs and how to, how to schedule for that.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Bob.
There would be a medical personnel in each of the schools, should the number that the board has requested be the amount that passed. If you cut $127,000, which I believe is the amount of the difference, and some, some change, there may not be a licensed medical attendant in each building, because you remember the board added one in to bring it to the number that we're requesting, because there was not one asked for in each of the buildings. So, the first thing that would probably be thought of taking out is the one that we just added, at, what, $60,000, something like that? So, that leaves us another $60,000.
Forty-five, it was $45,000.
Forty-five. So, that leaves us, what, $85,000, $90,000 more that we would have to cut in this particular area. And that could be any number there. It comes up to the board to make the decision on what gets cut. That's our job. You give us the money, we spend it the best way we think is possible to support the education of the students. At this time, if I may, I would like to offer an amendment to the motion.
Yes, go ahead.
So, I would like to --
He has the floor to offer amendment.
So --
You'll have time to argue, but don't worry.
So, I would like to amend the motion to read $2,542,980.37, the amount that was requested by the board.
Okay, the motion that Mr. English made was to replace the $2,415,831 with the number $2,542,980.37. Is there a second? There is a second. Comments, questions, discussion? The gentleman there, would you like to answer first? I'll let you, I'll give you the privilege of answering first, and then this young lady is going to go next.
Come right up to the mic and form a line.
I'd just like to state that the reduction was for guidance counselors, not medical staff.
Okay.
And I also wanted just to ask, is --
And I also wanted just to ask if you, if, with the guidance counselor suggestion of reduction, if they were aware that there are five schools? So does, does that five guidance counselors put a guidance counselor at some point at every school, correct? So by reducing a guidance counselor, that would leave a school without one?
Come up to the microphone, but while you're doing that, I want to make sure everyone heard what Mr. English said earlier. You give us the, you give the board the number, they will decide what to cut. They will take your, your recommendation in hand, but they don't have to follow it. You give them a number, they will make the cut, if they need to. Yes, sir. Name and.
Scott, I just, a general question. I know we've run into this at Town of Wales meetings sometimes. I think Mr. English might have fixed it a little bit. But the motion, the original motion on the floor, if that failed, and there was an amendment, what happened to the article?
The, the, the original motion was never voted on.
Okay.
Mr. English's amendment is what we're talking about now. Replacing the two four one five, et cetera, with two five forty-two.
Okay.
Et cetera. And that's what we're talking about, changing the number. Name and town.
Nicole Skanen, Sabates. Whether the cut in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars would come from nursing or guidance services, a cut of that type would be irresponsible, given the social, emotional, and medical needs of students as a result of COVID and changes in society.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's, my name's Megan from Wales. I. Megan from Wales, sorry, I guess I'm tall. I agree exactly with what he just said. Our kids don't get enough of it, and they have, they need these people. They need even more.
Thank you. Anybody else? Comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, we're go, yep, go ahead, Pat.
I'm too short.
Can you get it?
Pull the mic out for her.
We're coming.
There you go.
I just have a question. You're saying that we have five guidance counselors, and how many schools do we have? We have five. So you're talking about a guidance counselor at Libby Tozier that has pre-K and kindergarten only? Am I correct? And at Sabates Elementary, which is what grade level? One and two, correct? And we have guidance counselors, I mean, there, and we also have now nurses. So I guess, isn't there a little bit of overlap between a guidance counselor for that age group, as well as at least having the, you know, having a nurse? I, I just question, I'm just curious.
You've got to keep it, Pat, and carry it around now.
Jen Waterman, Sabates. I have the privilege of being the school counselor at the middle school. We are not guidance counselors anymore. That term went out the window in the 1990s. We have requirement to do our job to have a master's degree in counseling. I have had that questioned of me before. I will also tell you that the appropriate ratio for school counselor to students in any capacity, whether it be high school, middle school, or elementary school, is two hundred fifty students to one school counselor. Currently, at the middle school, I have over four hundred students that I am personally responsible for. If, sir, you would like to cut.
Jen, Jen, talk to you.
What I would like to say is that, given all of the circumstances of how society is, what our students have been through for the past three years, it is beyond irresponsible to say that we're gonna cut anything out of this section. Come walk in my shoes for a day. I highly recommend to not do this.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to add a couple.
Name and town.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Kristen Archer in Litchfield. I work at Cary Ricker currently, and I'm really close to the guidance counselors there, and work closely with them. I'd like to just clarify what their day looks like a little bit. They work with thirty-plus students in a week. They're called on emergency basis to meet with students in crisis, to call different emergency support workers if they need to. They connect with caseworkers if they need to. They meet weekly with teachers if they need to. And the current social worker at our school works with students with IEPs who have those goals, those social, emotional goals, and she also works with students without IEPs. So that's a lot of different various student needs. And she also goes to Libby Tozier. So she's in multiple buildings during the day. She's extremely committed, but I can also tell you that there is a job opening for a counselor as well. So because those counselors have to go back and forth between buildings, it makes our district position less desiring for people who are applying for those jobs as well. So we do have an open position, and so those students who need those counselors are not gonna have one right now if we cut this money out. Thank you.
Tom.
My name is Tom Wood. I'm from Litchfield. And I know an IED is an improvised explosive device. So I would encourage the professionals in the crowd to speak in English. Those of us who are not familiar with the abbreviations can understand what they're saying.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, just to make sure everyone understands, we're voting on whether or not to replace the number two million, four hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars with the number two million, five hundred forty-two dollars, nine hundred and eight, excuse me, two million, five hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-seven cents. Are there any questions about what you're voting on? All, all those in favor of that change, please signify. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. You're gonna have to speak loud, it's hard to hear up here. We are voting on whether to replace the number two million, four hundred fifteen thousand, eight hundred thirty-one dollars with the number two million, five hundred forty-two thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars and thirty-seven cents. Any questions about what you're voting for? No, no, this is just the amendment. Okay, all those in favor of that replacement switch, please signify. All those opposed? It passes. So now we're back to the original motion, that the RSU will be authorized to expend two million, five hundred forty-two thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars and thirty-seven cents. Comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify. And all those opposed? It passes. Article six.
So Article six is system administration. So this article is the central office, and this is often one that comes up a lot. And around, do we need a central office and so forth? If you, one of the biggest things with school, system administration, is making sure that we're in compliance, we're following laws, we're following policies, we're putting our reports in, our data collections in, so that we can get the funding that we need to run our schools. There's a lot of nuances to the central office. So although we're not in the classroom teaching, we're doing everything we can to make sure teaching can occur in the classroom with the resources and supports that schools need. So this covers superintendent, an administrative assistant position, the assistant superintendent. And the assistant superintendent in some districts are called the curriculum director. They may be called director of instruction, curriculum and assessment, or the assistant superintendent. The assistant superintendent position allows that if something were to happen to the superintendent, they can step in and be able to sign documents and make decisions that the superintendent. So it gives authorization in case something was to happen to the superintendent. Our assistant superintendent serves not only as support to the superintendent, but also as the curriculum director, oversees nutrition, oversees affirmative action officer. So if there's any complaints made around discrimination, or they would do investigations and cover that. They also, she also works with our coaches, oversees Title I grant for our student, for our schools, to make sure our students are getting the interventions they need, and watching our data, does data, supports principles. Also, this is our business office, which runs our payroll, accounts payable, also running our facilities and overseeing anything to do with the money and finances. Then we have also here purchased services, legal fees, supplies and travel, and it's the Board of Directors stipends, and they'll say they just, they make a lot of money. No. So this article was reduced by nine thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-five cents, and that was really looking at supplies, and can we live with the supplies we have for the following year? And it also was workman's comp.
Is there a motion for Article six?
Moderator? I would move that we would authorize to expend for system administration, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Is there a second? The motion is to be authorized to expend for system administration, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. It has been seconded. Comments, questions, discussion?
Nicole Russell, Sabates. My question has to do with the salaries, especially the superintendent when looking at the seventy-two-page line item. It appears that the salary was one twenty-five thousand for the prior year, and it's one thirty-one, eight forty for this year, which looks like to be a five point four seven percent increase. If that's how I'm reading it correctly, I don't know. I haven't really been able to look through the whole seventy-two pages or retain it all. So if you can answer if that's true or not, and.
Your second number is correct, your first number is not correct. I received a three percent.
Did you hear that? Do you understand that?
It's a three percent increase.
So the five point four seven is not correct?
That is not correct.
In the paperwork?
Whatever is looking like in the budget book, I'm not sure. But I'm telling you, I received a three percent.
So what would that mean, then, three percent?
Do you want, yeah.
Sure, so the timing of the budget, putting a budget together, and when you hire personnel doesn't always line up. So when you put the budget together for this fiscal year, the hiring of the superintendent, that contract agreement might not have happened in the timeframe when the budget was set out. So the agreement upon hire could have been higher than what was budgeted for.
What is the final number for this budget? I think is one of the questions she had.
I think she just stated it.
The one thirty-one.
The one thirty-one, eight forty is the final number.
Which contract to contract is a three percent increase.
So how did, was that one twenty-five last year?
So the one twenty-five was budgeted before they hired me. And so when we negotiated, we came to a hundred and twenty-eight.
Oh, the one twenty-five was an actual in the book?
Correct.
No, that's.
Nope, that's what we do with all positions that are open during budget season. We try our best to estimate what those salaries are gonna come in at, but we never know if we're gonna receive someone who has lots of experience, beginning of the scale. There's a lot of variation with that, particularly in the professional salaries. So we do our best to make an estimate, and sometimes we come in above, sometimes we come in under. We are rarely spot on.
Are those actual numbers available for the public?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Percy?
I don't know. I don't know.
All right, so I am Percy.
Well, they don't know your name, so you've got to.
Yeah, exactly, that's, yeah. I'm Percy Gowell from Litchfield. I do have a couple of curiosities, one being the assistant superintendent position. How do other communities take care of things in the event that the superintendent is unable to, if they don't have an assistant superintendent?
So they would look to see if the curriculum director has the licensing of it, and then they would have to work with an interim, they often get an interim superintendent to oversee.
Okay, I'm just, you know, just curious.
It's a good question.
I know in some smaller communities, the superintendent's also a principal.
Yes.
Is a principal able to step up and perform that?
If they have the.
Task?
If they have the certification.
Okay, all right, so is it a hundred percent necessary in our community to do that? Or is it just a decision that we would like to do to make things easier for everyone?
Bob, I'm sorry.
So having been on the boards from when we had an assistant superintendent for many years.
Yep.
And then we went to a director of curriculum, curriculum assessment and instruction, paid the same amount that we were paying the assistant superintendent. It was just a title difference to more accurately reflect what we were wanting that individual person to do. And then we had some incidents where we lost superintendents. And we had to main, we still had our director of curriculum, but we had to go out and hire an interim superintendent through main school management, as through the Department of Education. So they would step in to be able to sign the paperwork. It, it's the same, basically the same money, whether we call it the title director or we call it assistant superintendent. The benefit to us is, is if Katie goes and resigns this week, we have somebody that can officially sign the documents, make sure the paychecks are signed, and all those other things, without having to go off and request the Department of Education to help us find an interim superintendent, if we can find one. They have been hard to find. And so that, it, it allows us that ability to have someone in place already in case of an emergency or an unplanned deal. The money's the same, realistically. The duties are basically the same. She spends very little time as an assistant superintendent. Her time is spent on all the other functions that she would do with the other title.
So it was changed to more accurately describe the position, and that was a mistake? It was basically determined that that's not really the best course of action?
Yes, it didn't work out well. I mean, it seemed like the right thing to do at the time, but like Vicki, who was on the board for a while, and myself, and Robin, others who have been on the board for a while, know that sometimes we make the best decision we can, and then after a few years, we have to go and rethink it. And that's what we had to do with that position.
All right, well, it's a good clarification. I think everyone here is entitled for that, certainly. So there is nobody else in the district qualified to do that in the event that our superintendent isn't available?
Not to my knowledge, but I don't know everybody's credentials.
They may have it, and then they would have to be asked whether they want to be part of that position, yes.
Right. Okay, yeah, no, just curious, just trying to figure out how everything kind of operates. So, awesome, thank you.
I have a question. Can everybody hear Bob? He's not very close to the microphone, I just wanted to make sure that. Okay, Bob, you're gonna have to get closer to the mic from now on, okay? Like a rock star?
There you go.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Rocky from, Rocky from Sabates. I just had a couple more questions about the breakdown in the salaries and everything. The way that I'm reading it, we pay for the superintendent's, superintendent's FICA, and, which is, you know, everybody else has to pay their own FICA, so I don't quite understand that. And also in there, we. And also in there, we pay for $12,000 for transportation for the superintendent, the assistant superintendent and clerical. And I'm just wondering an explanation of that, excuse me, explanation of that as well.
Does anybody have an explanation of the transportation line?
So everybody has negotiated contracts. So in previous years, the superintendent had... Oh, sorry. In previous years, the last contract had transportation for the superintendent. My contract does not have that. The assistant superintendent in her contract does have transportation.
Okay. And what about the FICA?
Can you answer that, Sam?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Bob.
Or Bob can.
FICA is paid by the employer in every business and in every position. FICA is split between the employee and the employer. Between FICA and Medicare, Medicare is about 7.25% for the employer and 7.40% for the employee. So FICA is required to be paid by the employer, and that's why it's in those lines.
Okay. That's why I didn't quite understood that.
Yeah. So she's paying her 7.5% too out of her paycheck.
Okay.
And then we have to chip in 7.5, roughly 7.5.
And then as to why we have the transportation, did you explain why we have the transportation cost in there?
We put that in there. It's been in there forever because we require certain positions to travel all the way around the district and to travel away to go and either attend a conference or something that's going to benefit our school district. So that's why we pay them transportation, so that they're not using their car to drive... Kathy is seldom in her office. She's usually out in one of the schools, working with the building administrators or teachers. And that's that travel for her around the district and off to a conference or up to Augusta to go to the Department of Education for things. So that's just to reimburse them for the use of their vehicle to do our, do the job that we want them to do.
So essentially though, like when it does come to electing somebody that's, you know, a salary position or hiring them when it comes to their contract, shouldn't that be public knowledge to us before we offer that position since we pay that salary?
So contract negotiations of all sorts, including for administrators, are confidential until they're signed. Once they're signed, they become a public record, and you or I or anybody is entitled to get a copy of that kind of contract. So we negotiate contracts in order to hire the people that we want to hire. Transportation has been in contracts for, was in building principals for a while because they had to go to different places. So there's a number of people that get reimbursed for travel. It's not a set amount. The amount that's in the budget is kind of the amount that we're hoping that we'll stay under, but they put in their number of miles and they get reimbursed at the mileage rate, business mileage rate.
All right. I guess my explanation of my question is, once they sign their contract, it's too late for any of us taxpayers to do anything about it except for come up here during these budget meetings and have an objection. So you guys negotiated with her for transportation to be put into her contract, and that wasn't public knowledge to us. So thus, that turns into an extra $12,000 that gets broken down amongst the taxpayers.
I understand your position, but the public doesn't have input really on any contract during this negotiations, right? It's the board that negotiates or our negotiating team with whoever it is that we're trying to hire or whichever bargaining unit is being negotiated. So you're right. The public doesn't know what's in that contract until it's signed, and then only if they want to request a copy of the contract, then it becomes a public record. I think if you were to go back for years and years and years, you would find transportation in this cost center going back years, 10, 20 years. It's always there. It has changed because mileage rates have changed, but it's always been there. So if anybody was in the public was following contracts for these positions over the years, they would expect there to be a transportation dollar amount in there. If you just take the snapshot and you don't know what was in the prior ones and you see it, you say, what's this transportation? Please reach out and call the central office. People will explain that to you. They can go back and look at prior financials that will have them for prior years, some of which I think might be online, and you can see how much, and you can actually see the actuals, how much we actually paid in transportation though. So yeah, you're right, the public doesn't know ahead of time and has no input, but that's the way it works, just like between the UPS and the Teamsters or, you know, the public and even their workers didn't have much, didn't say. They had a bargaining committee, and that was who did the negotiations.
I understand that, Bob. Union and Teamsters are a completely different animal.
But negotiations is the same.
But that's in one company. You're talking about three towns and taxpayers. That's my point, is you guys throw a bunch of numbers at us. We just got this information at the beginning of the week, and we're told that there's a meeting today. Yes, the actual vote is in August, but I'm trying to get some clarification and explanation into where you guys have figured these figures.
And as Mr. Wood can tell you, Tom over there, he attends many of our meetings where we discuss the budget over periods of weeks, months, and we go down through every one of these lines. The public's entitled to all those. They can either come in person, they can watch it livestream, or they can Zoom and have an input. And that's where you can really learn and see what's in each one of the lines. To come to a meeting like this and get a document, you're right. There's not, you know, how much can you, how much time do you have to look into it and read it? And it is what it is. But that's the nature. So the public has an input into the budget starting back in February. Back in February, we started doing our budget meetings, you know? The public's there, we discuss items, they can talk and give us their feelings. We meet with the selectmen, or at least the superintendent does, for all the select boards so that we kind of get their input and their feeling from the towns. We try and be as open and transparent as possible. If people choose not to attend the meetings or to view them, there's nothing we can do, and then it does become a surprise to them on Monday when this mailing comes in their mailbox. But there's really not much that we can do about that situation.
Okay. Thank you. Any more comments or questions? Seeing none, the motion is to be authorized to expend for system administration $857,186.77. All those in play, please signify. And all those opposed? Article 7.
Article 7 is school administration. So as you see these articles, we started with regular education, which is in the classroom. Then we went to special education, which is supporting our students with disabilities. Then we went to Article 4, where we support our students in our co-curricular and our athletics. Then we went to Article 5, which is supporting our students with their social, emotional, library, technology. Then we went to the system administration. Now we're at school administration, where the importance of our administrators to support our schools in their day-to-day work in order so teaching and learning can go on. Now, our number one goal is to have our students be able to be successful academically as well as supporting their social, emotional needs. In order for them to have that, there needs to be administrators in the building to support our students and our staff and our families. And so what we did this year that is a little different is Sabates Primary School was supported by the Oak Hill Middle School principal. And with the high needs of having four grades in that school and having impact, as people have said, of what's going on in society, the COVID impact, it was, it didn't work. It wouldn't, it wasn't fair to both schools. And so having assistant at SPS didn't give the authority and have, putting that person in a principal's role, although they were the assistant principal. So this year, Sabates Primary School will have a principal, Michaela Stevens, who's here. Do you want to wave, Michaela? Yeah. And Michaela was the assistant principal for Carrie Ricker and Libby Tozier, so she's taking that role as principal, so that they do have someone on site full-time supporting that school. So that was the change there. It did not add to the budget, was looking at that position differently. And so this one had an increase of $911, and that's because as we go from budget to budget and we're looking at our numbers and the restructuring and what are the costs, looking at positions that were in there, because this is where our secretaries are for our schools. So looking at some of that, we had to make adjustments there. It still held to our number of our reduction from the board. And then we have travel. Again, we have travel in case a principal needs to travel for things. They get reimbursed for their travel, professional memberships. And this is also office for postage, so you can see what's covered in that. And these are very important positions in running the school. They have things that they have to attend to around ordering, supplies, discipline, communication, teacher evaluation. It goes on, facilities, something breaks, working with custodial staff, and there's a lot of work that they do on a daily basis to make sure our schools are safe and positive care in communities for our students.
Looking for a motion for Article 7. Bob?
So I move to authorize to expend for school administration $1,050,262.49.
Has been made and seconded. To be authorized to expend for school administration, $1,050,262.49. Comments, questions, discussion?
Jim Waterman, Sabates. The last sentence says assistant principal and dean of students are grant-funded. When do the grants run out and what is the plan to not increase more taxes when the grants run out?
So this is the last year those positions are grant-funded, and so we've had many discussions on how we're going to do that at the building level, and so the board already is aware that this is going to be one of those challenges.
So is there several other grants? I know we should keep it to this article, but in general, is there a lot of other grants that are going to run out, whether they are COVID grants or federal grants?
We have one, this is the final grant, and the only positions in there right now are those two positions plus a technician.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
And what? Oh, and yes, the study hall person, yeah. And there's a high school study monitor person.
Go ahead, Rocky.
Rocky from Sabates. On the numbers for the four principals, two assistants, and, well, not really the five school secretaries, but...
Speak a little bit closer to the mic.
Sorry. The numbers for, in the writing, for the four principals and two assistants, that's not counting the dean of students.
Correct.
Or the assistant principal for the middle school, correct?
Correct.
And in that budget sheet, the breakdown, that's factored into this budget. The numbers are there, factored into the budget, and the total comes out. That's, I thought the grant was already over.
No, they're not in there.
Well, it's on, it's on the 72-page document that's sent. Those positions are in there, and that's why I was just wondering.
The business manager is saying they are not in there, so we would have to look at it with you.
All right. So then I think we should...
If they were in there, we would have taken them out.
Well, then I think that, how do you say, amend this one, or I don't want this one to be put up right now because we should figure out that fine line detail first?
What 72-page document are you talking about?
The breakdown of everything, what we spend money on everything.
Okay.
You know, the itemized bill.
Business manager's picked up the mic.
So if you're referring to the budget documents, when we went over cost center by cost center, so it had every single line in there. So when we review those budget documents, you'll see they all start with Fund 1,000, which is our general fund, which is what we are talking about here tonight. Anything that is grant-funded begins with a different four-digit code so that we can track that grant, we can track the revenue that we receive from the federal grant or the state government, federal government and state government. So if it has a thousand at the beginning, that's something that you're talking about in this budget, which I'm confident is the answer to your question. So the two positions in question, the dean and the assistant principal at the middle school are grant-funded. Their salary codes do not begin with Fund 1,000.
Okay. So, but they are in that itemized, but they're just not counted towards, but it does show total numbers.
I guess I'd have to see the itemized document that you're referring to to confer with you, or...
Well, the 72-page document that you were just referring to.
Yeah, I have a lot of documents that go into the budget, so I just want to make sure we're talking about the same one, not trying to be cheeky. Just want to make sure.
No, absolutely. That's why I'm trying to get an understanding as well, because I don't want to, you know, double dip or anything like that, so...
Yeah, no, we're definitely not double dipping. I can say that with certainty. Yeah.
Go ahead, Katie.
Yeah, Jill, we're looking at the book there.
We're looking at the book. I'm looking right at that book that you were discussing, and I see what you're saying, but there are zeros where that position is located.
Prior to, there are zeros, but...
Right, but there's, there's no difference.
Scott?
Scott Weeks, Litchfield. So now I have another question. If I'm not mistaken, even if it's grant money, doesn't it still have to be listed in the budget and add to the total dollar amount?
No.
No. All right. I'm wrong. Do you have a breakdown for the local additional by town?
Yes. Yeah, that will come in that article. And I, yes.
It will come.
If you go to the back, on the back of what you're holding.
The back page, where it says Article 12 and 13, that gives you a breakdown of...
It has a breakdown of how much it's going to cost per town, but I was wondering about the local additional breakdown. The $4,341,000, what is the breakdown per town for that dollar amount?
That's coming up.
And while you guys are looking at that, I'm kind of looking at you guys because you're the only two I remember. Do, am I wrong in thinking that we used to vote on the local additional separately? Wasn't that a separate article, or am I totally dreaming that?
Yeah. It is, and I think it's coming up. It's one of these articles authorized the board, which one is it?
Article 13.
Article 13.
Which? It's on the inside page.
Oh, it's on the inside page? Yeah.
It's just, if that's what it is, that's fine. It's just, it looks like it's written strange, and I guess I didn't pick up on it, but...
Yeah. So unfortunately, this particular flyer here, I don't think contains it.
The flyer doesn't have it, but the...
Right, the flyer does have it.
Tonight's handout does.
Yeah, it was in the warrant, and it's in the handout. Well, it's going to be in the presentation. It'll be in the presentation.
All right. No worries. Perfect. And just for point of communication, if, when you guys are talking about articles and certain ones come up that are almost all reimbursed by the state or by the federal government or something like that, it might be worth mentioning. I guess I'm kind of referencing Article 2, because if I'm not mistaken, most of special ed is reimbursed, and it just might help alleviate some confusion out here as far as what people have for questions. You know, is that really affecting our dollars? Because it really isn't, because you're getting the money back, so...
It funnels into the formula, so the money that we get in a total is part of that.
Right.
So you still have to pay the additional and the required taxes, but it's in the formula.
Right. I understand. Like I said, a lot of people don't understand that we do get a lot of that money back from the state and the feds, so... Thank you.
Patrick Redmond from Litchfield. I've heard from the bleachers here a few times, you guys mention there's been mistakes. It didn't work. Some things in the past, like we have to now pay for extra whatever guidance counselors are called now to pick up the slack on some things that have messed up, because we took the money from the state for the things that we had to follow to get that money. So now we have to pick it up on the other end and pay for the extra stuff. As far as I can tell, we had a 13% increase on our taxes to pay for the things you guys wanted. The first time you brought it to vote, that got declined. The first time you brought it to vote, that got declined. And I'm not exactly sure, I'm, from what I hear overall. And you've brought this new budget back to us with about an 8% or so increase from what was last year. We're just trying to bring it back down to like a 5% increase, I think is what we were trying to do. So we are still trying to cut some of the money that we have to pay in taxes, even though that still gives you guys an increase. I don't know what all the numbers are. I don't know what to propose for a number. I think this is probably the best place to trim a little bit of that down, only because I know for a fact payroll is always your biggest expense. But if we do a little bit here, you know, these numbers actually don't look that bad. So if we did a little bit here and a little bit across the board on all our other spaces that we can to bring it back down to only a 5% increase. I know we all want to spend as much money as we can to get our kids to learn, but if we could be a little bit more conservative on the money that we spend, that would be helpful for everybody. And we really want to get a vote yes when we put it to the public. So that's what we're looking to do is get a yes vote. So we can bring some of these numbers down across the board. We don't have to come back here again and we can start spending the money.
Rocky from Sabattas. Just clarification, is dean of students the same as principal?
No.
No? Okay, what is the dean of students then?
So the dean of students helps supports the students in the school. So they don't have to carry their principal certificate and they don't work the same number of days.
Okay. So in, then that's, that's where I, I thought dean of students was the same as the principal, so I apologize for that.
That's okay.
But then we're giving an 87% increase in salary to the principal? If I'm reading it correctly?
No.
Because the year before it was like $44,000 and now it's $90,000 in the budget?
I can speak to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So in the previous year, as Katie mentioned, there was a split at the middle school. The middle school principal was intended to oversee the middle school and Sabattas Primary School. So that's how the budget was set up. It was a split of that position's salary. So what you're looking at for that $44,000 represents half of the salary for that principal. And with the SPS, Sabattas Primary becoming a principal, that's now allocated all to the middle school. So what you're seeing is that money just being moved, not being increased by that much. So it's a, you know, a salary increase based on their contract negotiated scale, but it does not represent, you would have to add up the Sabattas Primary line that you see and the middle school line from the previous year to get the full salary for what that position was.
Okay, yeah, because I saw where it said that about Carrie Ricker and Libby Tozier.
Yeah.
The split and the factor in that, but it didn't say anything.
Yeah, you'll see that.
About the middle school. Well, it doesn't show that about the middle school and.
Yeah, if I recall, because it feels very long time ago at this point.
Yeah, I was just looking at it.
Yeah, one of the first.
It didn't show that, that's why I was confused.
Yeah, one of the first budget meetings that we had, we went over some of those positions had been reallocated based on, you know, where they should be coded. So it looks like the money is in different places, but now the money is, we try to be really good about putting it where it belongs, where the positions are.
Okay.
Any more comments, questions, or discussion? Tom?
Tom Wood, Litchfield. One of the reasons that things are difficult to follow is that there's a sequence to all events. Back in April, we passed a budget that then went to referendum. Certain elements of that budget were passed without going to the referendum vote. One of those was Article 17, which authorized RSU 4 to expend grants. And so salaries that are being paid for by the grants are covered under Article 17 of the original work that we did in April. And so tonight's budget doesn't show those salaries or those expenditures because they're already covered in a previous action that we took in April.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Okay, so we're going to be voting on a motion which is to be authorized to expend for school All those in favor, please signify. Those opposed, passes. Article 8.
Making sure our students get to and from school. High priority. Yes, I see nods. And as you know, the challenges of hiring drivers and making sure we have everybody on the road and our director of operations oversees the transportation and you can be assured he's been working diligently on the bus runs so that we can get information out to parents. So this article covers the salary and benefits. Our director of operations, so good example, you'll see part of his salary in this article and in Article 9. And then we have 12 bus driver positions. We have a head bus driver. We have a part-time courier driver and we have a .5 admin assistant position. It also, we're fortunate to have a reduce in our fuel costs, a reduce in bus lease. Right now, our buses do not qualify us to be reimbursed for a new bus. So we're watching two buses in particular to see if they will qualify in the future. And we've also been looking a lot at electric buses. So you'll be hearing more about that. I rode in one recently up in, where did we go, Camden? And very interesting, have you been in electric or hybrid car? They're very quiet. And the bus driver said the kids are even quieter because they're not trying to talk over an engine. So it was interesting. So things coming down the line with transportation. So there's a difference from last time of $4,256.96 and that's really workman's comp.
Looking for a motion for Article 9? Bob? I'm sorry, Article 8. I'm sorry, we're on Article 8. I'm sorry.
Okay, Article 8. I would move that we authorize to expend for transportation and buses $1,130,106.6.
It's been moved and seconded to be authorized to expend for transportation and buses $1,130,106.6. Comments, questions, discussion?
I fully support funding our buses and daily transportation. Daily. That is a key word that I did notice was in here and I'm glad you said it again. I want to make sure that we have buses run every day. I don't want to see parents having to bring children to school anymore. Now I do know that the workforce is not on our side. So out of those 12 positions, how many are filled and how many are open?
We're going to our director of operations.
So we have 10 filled and then we have a head bus driver. And our head bus driver knows all the routes, so they're able to funnel in when we have a call out in order to try and eliminate having to cancel a run. But due to recent retirement, she'll be driving part-time on a regular run and then be a substitute in the afternoon to help with the little runs.
And what is our plan and is there any funds in this amount to have as an alternative? What is our plan for that when we don't have enough bus drivers? Are we pulling up and doing additional bus runs that can, you know, house, put more students on the bus on the route? Do we have paid CDL? Are you interested in CDL? I think the director of operations should probably have that. I think Kathy Martin, is it Kathy Martin who has?
Yeah, she's sitting next to me.
No. Okay, Kathy, there's, I knew there was a Kathy who subbed a lot. I never got the last name, though. I thought that was great, having somebody within our own district and our, to be able to fill in. I would pay double in taxes to fund anybody wanting to get their CDL. So I just didn't know what you had planned. I would pay anything for our children. I just want to make sure we're spending the money properly and where it needs to be so that our parents are not having to go and bring kids to school every day. And Sabattas Primary, fabulous. I think I did Libby Tozier once, but great job. You get us in and out in a really bad part of town. So I think, you know, what we've tried to do has been great, but we need to do better. So I would just like to know what's part of this budget for that and how are we going to accomplish that?
I got to call. Sure, so I first, I sympathize with you tremendously. I hate having to call and cancel a run. So last thing I want to do, so part of this budget includes, you'll see a line for contracted services or extracurriculars. So sometimes we can use those funds with like a Hudson Bus Line or Northeast Charter, another service that provides buses for red light stops. In recent past, we have done that and gotten them onto our regular runs to help with an extended outage of a bus driver. They've recently gone up tremendously in price and gone down tremendously in the availability. I'm also partnered with Norton Staffing, similar to like a Bonnie Staffing, and they find people in the workforce with certain skill sets. For us, it'd be a CDL A or B with a, you know, a school bus endorsement to drive that bus. And they reach out to me and say, hey, we have a prospective driver, we'd like you to, you know, test them out. And then if you're, you know, they want to sign with you full-time, you can hire them full-time. We are also exploring, I've been partnering with Jim Palmer, our adult ed director, and partnering with other school districts who are offering CDL programs in order to get more people in the door to become bus drivers. We're limited with the capacity of how many seats we can fill with those. They do come at a cost that we're going to certainly have to budget for a little bit harder next year. And then the new federal regulations with ELDT or entry-level drivers training have sort of made it a little bit more challenging for someone off the street who doesn't have a CDL to then, to then get it. So we're working through all those challenges as best we can. Again, I sympathize with you. I sympathize with every parent in this district. I don't want to shut a bus down, but we're doing the best we can with the resources we have currently.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, the motion is to be authorized to expend for transportation and buses $1,130,106.6. All those in favor, please signify. And all those opposed, passes. Article 9.
So Article 9 is the facilities and maintenance. So not only do we want our children to ride to school and that we want them to ride to facilities that are conducive for learning, and so this oversees taking care of the cleanliness, safety of our buildings inside and outside. And you can see that it covers the other half of the director operation salary, three head custodians and 15 custodians. It also does purchase services like plowing and inspections, so we have to by law have inspections done at certain points. Then we have supplies and equipment. We have a Siemens performance contracts. We have heating oil, liquid propane, electricity, and there were no new positions in this article. As, from the original, as Tom pointed out, it started in April. And so as we work through between the last budget and this budget, the fuel costs, we were able to lock in at a lower rate, so there was a reduction there. We also had hope for a grant. So we had funds in there to help support a grant to put verkata key in. And what that is, is instead of people having keys and going in and out, which is what we have, so our schools are safe, that you have to have a key going in and out. It also, this would allow us to swipe in and out so you know exactly who's going in and out and you can turn a key off, a verkata key, so you can say no longer can swipe, unlike trying to collect keys. So it's much more efficient in monitoring the safety of the school. We will definitely be looking at that grant next year. So you will see this back in the budget next year. The other things were equipment. We had equipment lines. So just like your home budgets, we look at what can we, what might be in our savings that we should buy what we had planned maybe to buy next year now. So when we looked at those funds, the facility and maintenance funds in May and we were coming into June, we have funds that could pay for equipment that we had budgeted in April, for the April budget. So we looked at that equipment and we purchased it with FY23. So we had to balance, making sure that we have enough money moving forward, that we've met all of our finance obligations coming out of the new year, and did we feel it was reasonable to be able to buy the equipment out of this cost center. This cost center had the funds to do that, so we did. And then as always, we look at the pattern of expenses with supplies and having to tighten the belt a little bit there, but you will see this is the cost center that has the large, second largest increase in it. And that's because we're really committed to looking at the needs of our facilities and maintenance. We hear that often. I also want to give a shout out to the towns for supporting us in paving some of the areas of our school. They had heard us at budget meetings and they stepped up and said, we can help you. So we really appreciate the towns collaborating with us to, to support us where we couldn't fund that. So that's cost center nine, or Article 9. I call them cost centers, they're articles.
Looking for a motion for Article 9?
All right, I move to expend $3,397,710.9 for facilities and maintenance and warrant Article 9.
Been made and seconded to be authorized to expend for facilities and maintenance, Has been seconded. Comments, questions, discussion?
Much better.
Rocky from Sabattas. I just had a question, does this cover, under this one, does it cover like the heating issue that was going on with like how hot it was at SPS this year and also the water issue like halfway through the year, they couldn't even fill their water bottles?
Yes, it does.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
No.
Thank you.
My name is Matt Early from Wales. I see in the paperwork there that we are, we have 1,300 students. Is that an estimate or is that a known number? Like is that anticipated?
When I last looked at it, I think it was 1,297.
1,297. What is the capacity of all five of our school buildings together? Like what?
We researched that. Do you want to comment on it?
Sir, are you asking spatially or just in total?
Fire, sorry. Fire code or room?
Sure.
Room to instruct students in the schools, I guess? How many could we comfortably fit in all of our buildings?
I don't have an accurate number. I do know, I know not a subject matter expert specifically on that. I do know certain spaces, for instance, a gym compared to a classroom compared to a lunchroom, based on the use, it does make a difference. So for instance, if our entire school district was made up of a gymnasium, we would have a much higher number than say if every room was made up of a 10 by 10 classroom. So there are some variables there. I don't have those numbers specifically, but I'd be happy to do some more research and try and get you those numbers to the best of my ability.
So kind of where I'm going with this is do we need five school buildings in our district? Or can we do things to move classes around like say the dinosaur of a building that's Sabattas Primary? Move those two grades over to where the rest of the younger kids are in Litchfield? Shuffle?
Yeah, so that's certainly been a discussion between superintendent, myself, the school board, financing facilities. So we're looking at both the cost of maintenance and repair and other expenditures as it relates to the physical part of the building. We're also looking at the occupancy level and, you know, what classroom can take, you know, what occupancy. Mold those two things together, make the best decision we can.
Do they still do the thing they call mobile classrooms or trailer classrooms?
They do have those still, yes.
Is it like, is that a cost?
We do not currently.
I know we don't. I know, but as an option, you know, to make it work, to reduce a building possibly if it?
There's, that's certainly an option to explore, certainly pros and cons to having a mobile classroom, certainly.
After this young lady, okay?
Hi, I'm Megan from Sabattas. I was kind of coming to talk about the same thing and I was just wondering what the options are at this point and if now's not the time to talk about it. I mean, I sort of feel like it is because we're putting so much money into these. I mean, I sort of feel like it is because we're putting so much money into these schools that I know that money is needed. But if we're, if we could do something proactively to shut one of those schools down and move the kids somewhere else that's obviously safe and all that, that's what I would hope to, to hear about.
I don't want to get into a debate on that tonight, but a general answer from Mr. English might be, might wrap that up. Go ahead, Bob.
All right, so in answer to your question about capacity, these same five buildings...
Can you hear Bob?
In these same five buildings, ten years ago before they held over sixteen hundred students. All right? So there's a capacity number that they were able to as they were configured at that time. All right? So, and with those class sizes that we had. So things changed, reconfigured, new, you know, whatever our population has gone down. But we did at one time in these same five buildings, as they are standing now, hold over sixteen hundred students because we were officially at sixteen hundred and one students when the RSU formed. And we were down a little bit from a higher number that we had had. The Finance and Facilities Committee was tasked to go and look at space allocations, specifically to go and see whether or not it could make sense and if we could close one or both of the older schools. We ran up to summer and we're not working this summer on that. We will be back at it again in the fall. So we got some preliminary information. And like I said, there's been some reconfiguration done in the last ten years. So that impacts some of that. It's, you know, we, we do have the old buildings. The request to build a new extension failed. We heard the community, so we're trying to do the best. But we end up with, we got mold at Libby Tozer now. That's going to cost us, I don't know how many thousands of dollars probably to go and take care of so that we can use those classrooms. Or we're going to have to find something to do with the kids that would be in those classrooms. And we don't have much time to get that all redone. And I don't know what the last number came in. They were just getting quotes sometime this month or this week on what those. So we have problems in these older schools. Each school has different problems. Neither one of them is the best solution, but it's what we have. So we're working on that. And it would, unfortunately, we're not getting the new Panixlet. In twenty years, we'll have a twenty-year-old school instead of seventy-year-old schools. But that's, that's where we are.
Are we on the list for a new school through the state? Or is it the state or federal?
Yeah, I think the superintendent can answer better, but we are nowhere near being able to get on a list for the school just because of the criteria for it in order to get on the school funding would be not, we don't qualify.
Okay, and I just had two more questions, but...
A little bit closer to the mic.
Have we thought about the Wales Central School, about trying to put that back into action? And if we could put a grade there or something? I don't know anything about it, I just remember.
Again, I don't want to get into a debate.
Okay.
The facilities is, is working on that.
Okay, so what I understand then is if we pass this and then we decide, you guys work on it and decide to shut down one of those buildings and we don't need to use this, it would be moved to move people or to relocate the kids?
It would take at least a year, maybe two years to do that.
Yeah.
You can't just say, we want to close this school. It could happen now.
Yeah.
Close to the mic.
There was just on the, on the state list that keeps coming up, there was a school in northern Maine, and I can't remember what town, that got burnt down because of arson. And they went to the state for emergency funding and the state told them that they would not even have a list until 2025. So they're going to have to find an alternative. Their school completely burnt.
Any other comments or questions on Article nine? The motion is to be authorized to expend for facilities and maintenance, three million, three hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred ten dollars and nine cents. All those in favor, please signify. And those opposed, passes. Article ten, to see what sum the RSU will be authorized to expend for debt service and other commitments.
So this is the debt service that we're still paying off for the Oak Hill Middle School project. So this is something you committed to, I think, how many years, ten years?
It's a hundred percent state funded, right?
Yeah, so...
Tell them that, it's not going to cost them anything. They're getting them, we're getting the money from the state.
Right, it's similar to what a gentleman brought up about special education. It runs into our funding formula. So the amount, we have to pay it, but it comes back through our funding formula to, to pay for it.
Looking for a motion for Article ten. Bob?
I move that we authorize to expend for debt service and other commitments, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Seconded. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
Richard Lane from Litchfield. If this is a loan actually of four hundred and fifty-three, uh, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine seventy-seven, how can you reduce that for a different price? I can't reduce my mortgage, but... You've got a difference there of eighteen, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars.
Bob?
So your mortgage payments go down by interest. You may pay the same amount. This is difference they charge us because we're not paying interest. So the amortization of the loan goes down. We pay a little bit less each year until it's paid off. And so this eighteen thousand dollars is, can be thought of as the interest for the payment? If you were to look at the revenue side, which we don't present here, you'll see the same amount coming in as... So the state gives it to us, we, you have to authorize us to go and spend it. And when they built the school, we committed to it at that time. And that stayed a Sabates commitment. It is not an RSU other than everything goes through the RSU. So the state gives us the money, you have to allow us to go and pay it. It's a commitment of the RSU to go and pay the money. So that's, that's a reduction in the amount of the payment based on amortization tables.
Nicole Russell, Sabates. So that full amount is strictly for the debt service of that loan and other commitments is just the category by which it falls with it, within? Yes. Okay. I still don't understand that eighteen thousand dollar difference. But what I'm hearing is this is not from our taxpayer money, correct?
It falls into your ED two seventy-nine. So you do pay six, the state pays sixty percent, approximately sixty percent of your total. And then the local has to pay approximately thirty-nine point eight percent. So when we get to the next, when we get to Article twelve, you're supporting that through, in order to get your state funds.
So we get sixty percent back?
Sixty percent of the total ED two seventy-nine, that's the funding formula. You get a total, the, the towns pay approximately sixty percent. I mean, the state pays approximately sixty percent and the towns approximately forty percent.
And what's the maturity date?
We've been asked, trying to remember.
I can double check on that, but I think we only have a few years left to pay on it.
And is it a fixed rate?
Pardon?
Is it a fixed rate?
Interest free.
It's, well, the amount that you're seeing in the decrease is the decrease in the interest. So the principal stays fixed and solid. And like Mr. English said, the interest reduces year by year. That's, so every, every year we have this, you'll see a reduction in this line.
Yeah, so the more you pay your mortgage, you get closer to the end. You pay more towards principal than interest. It says principal and interest payment.
The principal's fixed, so the principal doesn't adjust.
Is the interest rate fixed?
I don't know how it was calculated at the origin of the loan. I could do some research on that and find out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? The motion is to be authorized to expend for facilities and maintenance. Sorry, you're right. The motion is to be authorized to expend for debt service and other commitments, four hundred fifty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. All those in favor, please signify. All those opposed, passes. Article eleven.
So this is one that you're voting on, although there's no funding needed for this. The food service was Article eleven, and it went into a different article that was approved at your last budget meeting.
Looking for a motion for Article eleven.
Move authorize zero dollars for expenditure for all other.
Is it seconded? Questions, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify. All those opposed, it passes. Article twelve.
So Article twelve is similar to what we were just speaking about. So this is, we get a calculation based on our staff, our students, based on special ed, economically disadvantaged, transportation, and it filters through a calculation. Every district has the same calculation formulas. It's the data they put in that generates the number. And so, so our number, and I thought I had it right here, seven, was around seventeen million dollars. And of that, they take what the towns can, are going to pay first. So they say the town's evaluation, this is how much the towns will pay, and then this is how much the state funds are. So in order to receive the eleven million, three hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred, thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty cents, we need to collect six million dollars, six million, twelve thousand, fifty, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. It's getting late, sorry. So if we do not raise this, then we don't receive the state funds because they calculate it as in they feel the communities can afford that and then they do the difference.
So I'm looking for a motion on Article twelve, twelve, to raise six million, twelve thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. It's a yes or no vote? Is there a motion?
Can I move for a yes vote?
Second. Questions, discussion, comments?
I guess I'm confused again. You took that one figure, you took that one figure, but the whole total is twenty-two million, one hundred and twenty-nine, four oh six. Down the fourth line down, we're going to vote on another four million, three hundred and forty-one thousand.
I'm, I'm lost, I don't know where you're at.
I, I do, I know what you're saying.
Oh, you do, okay.
Yes, so you're correct. The DOE, the Department of Education calculates for every school department based on a certain formula for the basic education. And then, so that's what you're voting on right now. The additional is what you need to make the difference between. And I, we noted that there are additional revenues that come to the district as well, which is seven hundred and thirty-six thousand. That's additional, which you won't vote on. We get additional revenue from different sources. And then we need four million dollars, four million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, six twenty-five, forty-four to make up the difference to get to the twenty-two million, one twenty-nine. So there's, you just did the vote on the articles, which is the right to expend funds. This is now raising the revenue to pay for those expenditures. So the first one is what you have to raise in order to meet the state's formula.
This is all three schools, all three towns.
Correct.
So what part of the four million, three hundred and forty-one thousand is raised by Litchfield?
Right, so when we get to that...
Wrong article.
We're gonna, we're, on the next article, business manager prepared to tell you.
You're asking me to vote on this right now, and I'd like to know what, what the figures are going to be that I'm voting on.
Yes, go ahead. Yes, Douglas, it's this one.
So I'm kind of new to this aspect too. And I actually asked the same question the last time. So that's why I kind of wanted to reiterate what the next couple of articles are in kind of like layman's terms that I had to kind of understand. If we go to Article fourteen, that's the whole school budget. Twenty-two million is what we had, we have to pay to cover all the costs that we've kind of gone through. It kind of goes backwards and twenty-two million's the whole budget. If you subtract the four million, that's extra we need to raise. So you would subtract that from the twenty-two million. And then it comes down to seventeen million, I'm roundabouting here, seventeen million. In order for us to get seventeen million total, we as a town need to contribute six million and the state will contribute eleven million. So in layman's terms, to add Article twelve, thirteen, and fourteen kind of together, our total school budget will be twenty-two million. As a town, we need to pay the six million to get the state funds. And then we need to raise another four million or authorize the raising of four million. So we are owing about ten to eleven million, and the state will kick in the other eleven million. So as a town, for our twenty-two million school budget, we're, we're going to end up paying as three towns around eleven million and the state will contribute eleven million, is what these three articles are kind, are saying, but in a, their own technical crazy. They kind of broke it up. So again, the, the six million is just what the state says we need to owe, pay for them to give us eleven million at the top in the bold up there. This, the full state subsidy of eleven million, thirty-eight thousand. If we, if we pitch in six, if we only voted six million, the state will contribute eleven. But we found going through all these different articles and all the cost centers that our total school budget needs to be twenty-two million. So if the state is only willing to pitch in eleven million, we will pitch in six to get the state funds, but we're still four million short. And that's why we need to have additional local funds, which is the next part of that, to reach the total twenty-two million that we would need to keep the schools running in the way that we have outlined. Did I?
And you can see on the chart, on the left-hand side, on the left-hand side is what the state allocates each town. And then, so Litchfield, it says for the basic education, it's five point five million. For Sabates, eight point six million. For Wales, two point eight million. And then it says how much can Litchfield raise for, for that allocation, two point seven? And then the state gives a difference. Sabates, two point three, the state gives a difference. For Wales, nine hundred and twelve thousand, and the state does the difference. So if you add up on the right what the towns will pay, the state does the difference. So you can see your total by town and then what you have to raise, and the state does the difference. Okay?
Comments and questions? In this article, we're raising six million, twelve thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-three cents, and we're appropriating seventeen million, fifty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirteen cents. Does anybody have any more questions before we vote? All those in favor, this is a for a yes vote. All those who want to vote yes, please signify. And all those who want to vote no, please signify. The yes has it? Has it? Passes. Article thirteen. Shall the school union forty-four, school regional unit number four raise and appropriate four million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-four cents in additional local funds, which exceeds the state's essential programs and services funding model by four million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-four cents, required to fund the budget recommended by the Board of Directors? This is also a yes vote and it is a written ballot. Is there a motion?
I move that... I move that regional school unit number four will raise and appropriate 4,341,625.44 in additional local funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Go to your respective towns clerks, you'll get a yes or no ballot, yes if you want to do the, the 4 million plus, no if you want to do some other number. Boy, that made a difference.
Is everybody voted who wishes? Does anybody need assistance voting? You want to declare the box closed, Mark?
If, if nobody needs assistance, I declare the ballot closed.
I asked it last time, so like, I really want to answer this one.
Mine was like a, mine was like an afterthought.
Probably give us all the years.
You would think, but not fast.
Yeah, you guys could, seriously.
Guess not.
Oh, that is good, that's clever.
That's real clever.
So our next round, one of our next rounds starts in February.
Yeah, I like a bunch of stuff.
I didn't start until April, so they kind of pre-decided a lot of stuff, they gave me the binder, and I'm like, I don't actually know what it is.
Me too.
I abstain from a lot of the first deliberations, so I just, I don't know.
I'm trying to kind, like, I know I'm like, it's like mid-race, I'm trying to get like a mental, where is the actual start? I know with a lot of like town things, it's usually August, end of July, I think August or May.
That would be fine.
There, town, just now.
Yeah, absolutely, I think you're right.
Trying to, mostly so I can answer questions.
Yeah.
There's a lot of questions.
I kind of thought it was based on the looks, I think.
We have a result from Article 13, 69 total votes, 35 yes, 25 no. Must have been 10 blanks.
10 people didn't vote.
Okay, 10 people didn't vote, okay. Okay, so Article 13 passes. Article 14, to see what sum the regional school unit will authorize the Board of School Directors to expend for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024, from the regional school unit's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, non-state funded school construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes under the main revised statutes, Title 20A, Section 15690, unexpendable balances, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for the support of schools. The recommendation is 22,129,406.56. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Bob?
I would move 22,129,406.56.
Second.
Don't you need to read the whole thing, Bob?
You want to take up the time, I can read it.
Just kidding. Comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify. All those opposed, it passes.
Yep.
Any announcements?
Thank you everyone for coming, and just a reminder that official public referendum is August 15. I put 8 to 8:00 p.m., I know I think Wales starts at 7:00 a.m., and it's a regular voting locations. Thank you everyone.
Meetings adjourned.
Drive safe home.
Yeah, I know, I stopped by the house the other day.